Ladies and gentlemen, let me open a series, like I said, two public hearings, and a special meeting with five action items for tonight. And we don't usually meet on Tuesday, but Hurricane Harvey, that guy hung around a long with messed up our calendars, got our circadian rhythm all messed up for us. So we're here on Tuesday night. Good to see all of you in the audience, and we'll proceed with the opening. A Dr. Public hearing for the Public Hearing of Proposed Fiscal Year 2017-2018 Budget. And I'll ask City Manager, the Stafford U.
Our adopted chambers here. This is the formal public hearing, one of two that's required as part of the adoption of the city's annual budget. As we've done the last few years, I was going to go through the presentation much like we saw at the initial kickoff meeting. I'll try to run through this as quickly as possible, but I think it does focus all to set this out for the public and as part of this formality. I will give a large caveat, though, that this material is all based upon the recommended budget that was delivered at the end of August and before the initial council reviews and discussions, and also obviously before Hurricane Harvey. And so last Friday in the materials, and we're going to have another separate public hearing on the tax rate, the property tax rate of the city, I did recommend to you that we go to the maximum that the city had adopted, or sorry, the council had authorized for publishing, that up to the .70. Logic of that is that, given the storm event we just had, the uncertainties that that brings, the expenses that we've incurred, obviously hopeful that many of those will get reimbursed over time, but liquidity is one issue. You know, there'll be without a doubt some parts that are not reimbursed. And we're going to be diving, I would suspect, once we get through this payroll, below our minimum fund balance, we need to replenish that and set ourselves up. And sorry to say, too, we're just, you know, there's more storm season ahead of us. So for all those reasons, we've been coming with that recommendation, but again, that's not reflected in the numbers that have been developed earlier. Part of that going, that maximum rate, and council had discussions about that, is we suggest that we go to the pay plan that had been recommended and 100% of that at the start of fiscal year 1718. So the only way to make that, I believe, sustainable for the long haul in Sydney is to increase that operating rate to give us that flexibility. So again, the formality, we talked about our purpose here, and we saw that live examples of that for the last week, but obviously, city employees are here doing this purpose of serving day in, day out, and have and will continue to do that. Taxable value drives our debt service funding for the tax rate 100%, and then also a big chunk of our operating, so it's a major piece. And this is again, a wild card a little bit with future valuations. You've seen the reports, we fared relatively well compared to many, but what that does to values when they count falls on January 1, you know, that's, obviously, we'll see some impact to that. The balanced budget, big picture again, we're operating revenues and expenditures are equal. We brought this to you, fund balance was just above the policy minimum. And again, with these extraordinary expenses, fearful that we'll be going below that to replenish that. You know, we need to keep on with our streets and sidewalks maintenance. And the people costs, we've gotten a lot of material to show that the bodies we've added, the positions, the benefits and the salaries for that, is driving our fixed costs, our operational costs year over year. And those were already baked in, what we've added to keep up with the growth and keep up the service balance, not just what we've had to try to keep up in this current upcoming year. So in that recommended budget, we had the coal increase across the board, and then the sub-service step increases. We had originally recommended, or talked about, going with a more gradual approach for the 95% of markets for the pay plan. And again, if we can get to this .7, we can afford to do the 100% at the beginning of the fiscal year. We continue to make investments in public safety. That's the biggest single chunk of our operating funds, over half of the general fund expenditures is public safety. And keeping that service level, not just where it's at, trying to improve on that. And we have the benefit of the Berkshire and the Sidney Gate studies. The number one priorities for the department in place was for telecommunications officers, jailer, and then additional officers as well. In the fireside, we want to get the continuous onboarding. The fire officers are going to be building new stations. We've got to get more resources. Station A is up next on Shadow Creek Parkway. And to ramp up for that, makes sense to bring that on gradually, get people integrated in our systems, get familiar with the city and our ways, and then just all the training and so forth. So we're suggesting that, and then as part of regular operations, there's 25 replacement vehicles in PD, and then a couple of miscellaneous in fireside. So when we did this, again, the budget was, we started this obviously in the summertime. We had a 4% sales tax growth included in that. That's our single biggest general fund revenue source, and then that is the revenue source for Enkai Global Corporation. Property tax revenue follows the rate and the value. The rate had been declining as function of as we grew the tax base and was able to spread out that service a little bit farther around. The state mandated calculations, numbers we got from the crazy just rates, we waited really until the 11th hour to get those, and were able to give you their recommended budget, having those numbers rather than trying to scramble around afterwards. And they gave us the series of effective rates. This is a mathematical calculation that's time to propose, the current rate. And then again, it's time, the rollback rate was 75, and again, we suggest we go up to We need to continue reinvesting in our infrastructure. If we don't do it now, it's just going to cost more later. And, you know, we need to stay after the maintenance approach, and we've tried to make some investments on that. The number ideally would be much higher, but in this budget, at least we're treading water with what we've had in the past. We've got a series of wastewater, water utility improvements in the capital program and roads and streets, sidewalks. For the debt service fund, you know, trying to predict that a little bit is difficult, obviously, with the values changing and increasing, and the extra wild card of the storm event. But, you know, this projection based upon as good a assumption we have, you've seen these when John Warblock and company come through and showed you what our future debt service requirements are. And then just a recap of the funding highlights, talked about those. You know, trying to keep up with the service for rest organization, IT asset management software, grounds maintenance contract management, and then the air chiller, air conditioning unit at this building. We do have 23 physicians in there, each of which on the general fund, balancing in PDC or the Water Waste Water Enterprise Fund. And then you can see here the distribution of our revenue sources, property and sales tax, just over half of that by themselves. And then again, this shows the very high level overview of revenues and expenditures, balance, but just getting us at fund balance policies. So, and then the debt service fund, again, required to show a debt service rate that doesn't account for all the value, but we promised, obliged ourselves to using some of our fund balance, and then optimistic that during the year we can come back and eliminate some of the higher interest rate debts for some reasons. And again, it's important to keep in mind that of the overall city property tax rate, about two-thirds of it goes to debt service, balancing for operations. And I should say that even of the city piece, that's about 20 to 30% depending on a person's home, set total property tax bill. So I'm going to take over Mr. McCarter, and I'll take you through the water sewer numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. As Mr. Pearson mentioned, my name is John McCarter. I serve as budget officer here with the City of Fairland. Beginning with the water and sewer forecast, looking in the blue box here, we see this year, I'm sorry, FY '18, we are projecting to have an ending cash equivalents of $12.3 million. That is above our required policy minimum. We are projecting a 10% increase being in on revenues for this upcoming fiscal year, FY '18, with an 18.4% and a 15.6% increase in subsequent years. Looking at what that means for actual residents, these are sample bills that we hold depending on usage, because it does vary depending on the size of meter and the usage for the individual. Up top, we see with the 2,000 gallons, as little as $3.40 change in the monthly, at the top here, $101.42 for 160,000 gallons worth of usage there on the two inch. Looking at the city's internal service funds, the first being the property and liability insurance fund, what are the expenditures this year? $1.26 million of the landing fund balance, just over $150,000. That exceeds our policy minimum by $64,000. The medical consult insurance fund, looking at $7.7 million in total expenditures, $2.4 million as our ending fund balance, that's about $151,000 over our policy minimum. We do have a plan drawn down of funds in FY '18 to mitigate some of the costs to the city and to employees to see some savings there in the actual cost transfer. The mode pool fund is included here as an example for discussion later this evening. What's reflected here is if we were established for the purposes of maintenance and this year's capital purchases only, in the FY '18 revenues, we also have included that $225,000. That's in the FY '17 budget, we would allocate that at carryover with the projected ending fund balance of that 225 and allocating funding as appropriate in the years. Looking at some of the smaller funds, the city does have a number of other special revenue funds. I won't go through all of these, but with the state community, we are looking at the use of fund balance in four of these six, or I'm sorry, four of these five funds here. All of these are within the policy minimums established for their respective funds. Sustainability infrastructure with our solid waste fund, we are looking at revenues exceeding expenditures by about $150,000 for the total ending fund downs to $444,000. With the sidewalk fund, we are looking at revenues coming in without any planned expenditures this fiscal year with the same with the traffic and permanent fund. Parks recreation and events, our largest fund here is our homes on Motel occupancy fund. Our revenues at $1.46 million do exceed expenses by about $7,700 for the ending fund balance to just over $12.5 million. We also have our park donation fund with planned use of fund balance there, as well as revenues without any planned expenditures upon the park development fund as well. Looking at the engaged community fund, our engaged community, we do have the municipal channel, a PEG fund, if you will, with revenues per day, we had $301,000, $131,000 in expenditures, that's a $169,000 add for the upcoming fiscal year. With both our grants and CDVG funding, those are programmatic expenses, so we do have our revenues matching our expenditures there. With Fairland Economic Development Corporation, they are planning a use of $3.6 million in fund balance, bringing the ending fund balance to $16.7 million with a number of incentives going on this year with $2 million there, along with the state highway 35 redevelopment strategy implementation at $3 million and roughly $2.3 million of activities in the lower Kirby area. Fee updates, this year we did recommend a number of fee updates, those are found in the appendix of book one. We do this as an annual process to update through the budget process. This will be our first update since FY '16, exclusive of our water trades, which are updated annually. Just hitting some of the highlights that we have here, the first is the water and sewer, which we touched on earlier. The credit cards are still included here, those were recurring for the last city council meeting, those will be removed from the budget pending further discussion from staff and direction to the city council after the first quarter. In public works, we are looking to update fees to reflect the costs associated with delivering each one of those services. The Parks Recreation Department also is looking to update fees to reflect policy and encourage rentals, also with the introduction of a 7% membership at the recreation and end boarding. Development fees, the PUD, would be adjusted to recover costs, along with the garage sale fee, adding $5 to recover costs associated with processing those permits. We also looking the standardized reinspection fees at $75, once your max number, reinspection fees as the current standard. So looking at next steps, our next public hearing will be solely on the tax rate, this is our only one that we have on the budget. Today is September 5. September 11 will be our next reading, I'm sorry, our next public hearing, with the first and second reading on the budget scheduled for September 18 and September 25 respectively. With that, we'll all open it up.
And Mayor, I think the next thing would be for the public comment, and then come back to the council meetings on this piece. I'll just remind that the special meeting, we do have an agenda item for further discussion on the budget as well for the council.
Okay, let's everybody take a deep breath now. Are there any citizens that would like to contribute some comments at this point? To do, there needs to be a forum, I bet you'd be pleased. Are there any citizens that would like to speak at this point? I don't have a speech as myself, I don't. So that's good. Let's move in down to item five on our agenda. Let the council and staff have a quick discussion process. So let me start off with our council, with the rotating system here, starting with the council member. Well, ones, would you want to let you start just coming in?
Yeah, I'm glad I have at this point. Yeah. This is okay. Yeah, I have a few questions on that, and my biggest concern-
Sorry, go closer, because this room smokes up the sound pretty well.
Yeah, okay. My biggest concern is the recurring cost. Because I noticed a lot of things on our funding for its employees, whatever, you know, bringing them on board, and what have you, coming in the second quarter or something of that thing. So when you do that in the '18 or in the '19 budget, it's a full load there. And so that's one of my biggest concerns, is what is going to hit us in '19 on there with the reoccurring cost that we're going to have on some of these things, and also some of the impact on the few employees coming on board? Is that a full load that's on there? Is it just, you know, I see what the numbers are, but is it included the load of vacation and holidays insurance and all of that? Is that in that figure that we have?
Yeah, all the personal costs are loaded up with benefits, and even, you know, where we have recognized equipment to start up, et cetera. So the CAG out, that'd be, some of them were built in for partial years, and we are all concerned about, you know, the recurring costs that came in.
I guess one of the other things that may happen here is on the water and sewer, right, increase. And looking at that, what we see in the next two years out, what the increase of the water and sewer will be for as amount of water used, is that increasing, is that the cost of increase in the water, or is that the increase of the usage of water?
Those are revenue increases, total revenues. So the actual rates would be a little bit less based upon increased volume, but that's the revenue we have to have to sustain the system, to pay debt service, to pay for the operations. We definitely, you know, have increased costs from getting us caught up. Look, I'd say is, you know, the city went through a number of years with no increases, and, you know, that'd be in light of, you know, fixed costs is increasing for labor and chemicals, electricity, et cetera. So we just don't have anything to draw on. I know someplace like Sugar Land that imposed a surface water plant fee, I mean, everybody's different, obviously, but none of that done.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, that's one of the questions I have, because it looks like this year we're about $8 billion, that was all in the enterprise fund, and the next year it's 180-something billion, the following year through then. So in reality, what we're looking at within, when we get into 2019, will be a billion dollars in debt. So looking at that, what is it going to be? It's not going to be .3 cents anymore on the debt service, it won't be quite that high than that. Because I don't see anything, and we're going to be paying off in the debt service to lower that debt during a period of time. All I see is increases, and that doesn't count COs or GOs that will be going out for your things as part of that. So, I mean, when we get into '19, that's on the water plant that we have, I mean, we're drawing down 100 from your numbers here, 183 billion, so that plus 80-something billion this year. So that's 260 million in the house year '19. So, you know, it's plenty of dollars, and what's that going to impact us now? If we're, if Enterprise is a federal fund to get, we're up 700-something billion dollars in debt now. So I'm hoping, ladies and gentlemen, that y'all looked at that, calculated out, so if we're 43 cents, we're not going to jump to 53 cents on there. And the 70 cents, we will prove that next, you know, in '19, you'll be going, you know, 75 cents.
I actually would say that on the debt service side, you know, we'd be much more confident on that in terms of, we, the numbers that we have done and John has done for you that you've seen, both are loaded with what we anticipate in the CIP for additional issuances and conservative estimates for future years after year three and four in terms of the growth in tax rates. So the CIP is really grabbing that, and it's, I'd say, it's mostly givens in terms of the water and sewer plants and the upgrades there. But those are fully baked, the numbers we've given you on that, and, you know, that's one area I'd say we're, you know, we benefited from growth in the tax base that's spread out on the general obligation, and that does include certain physical obligation as well. And on the water and sewer, you know, again, the rate structure and everything else like that has been going pretty well. So they're big numbers, but like you said, it's a big operation, and we got a lot of expenses to go with.
Yeah, it just seems like, you know, when we reach a billion dollars for 122,000 people or whatever the number's going to be in two years from now, it just seems like a pretty hefty, that's going to be hitting, you know, citizens. That's all I have on that, Mayor.
Okay.
For others?
Thank you, Mayor. Don't have a lot, just there are some assumptions. On the 70 cents, we're proposing the 43 on debt service and the major 27 to be operations and maintenance. Is that the point?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And in that, in that budget, we're talking about the 100% for the, for the staff at the beginning of this week, as opposed to for later?
We believe that, we run it completely, but we believe that we could do that in the 70.
Not yet. A couple of minor things, I know we talked about the credit card fees, we're going to push that, I think, especially now, right? You know, we're going to have a lot of people who are going to be, I think the people who use the credit cards are likely the people who are not financially able to deal with those monthly costs, and those are likely the people who are having, dealing with the most havoc, you know, early in the Harvey. So I think it's the right decision for us to push that. I think the garage sale fee, honestly, I think my understanding is about $50 right now. And then, I mean, we push it up to 20. I really don't know if there's a big difference in us pushing that up. Most of the people who do that are running then, you know, if you make 100, $200, actually, you make $125 off the garage sale, you're probably doing well. I really don't want us, I don't want to see us push that up. I mean, I think that's a, I know we're paying for the advertisement, we're paying for the signs, and that's kind of a consequence to the no mandate signs. That's the reason why we have that process, but really, the people who are having garage sales, I mean, sometimes those five, that $5 can mean a lot to them. You know, I'm happy taking a little bit of the loss on each of those. We don't, we don't do a ton of them, we do enough, but I'm not really too concerned about I think we talked about this before, and I just want to make sure that I remember correctly. On the reinspection fees, what was the threshold for them to trigger a reinspection fee?
So one comes with, I'm only going to permit, that's issued, and then the second one, the reinspection.
But how, what mechanisms are we going to use to ensure that either we're communicating or our staff, that we're not going to use that as a revenue generator? I mean, the reinspection, we're not going to fail people with impunity and be able to drive up profitability because we're constantly having to re-inspect. And I trust our inspectors, I know that they're not going to do that. But what are we going to do to make sure that the community, it's communicated to the community and communicated those are building here, that we're not using failed inspections or any of that?
We're actually initiating a contractor forum, basically as a development forum, but targeted at those who come in every day with the actual work. That's one of the ways from this page, we'll share that with them, let them know that there's a good change, but let them know that how we expect, is it going to change? Obviously, there's only a few of them who work every day, reason of the time, resources, very specific safety eye to target. We're fairly consistent with those. Mr. Scoville, in talking with the official, works closely with his inspector to make sure that they're on the same page as we.
I'll just add, too, that, you know, it's a win-win if things get done the first time right. And I think this is actually a positive incentive for people to not be calling stop, because our inspectors, believe me, they don't want to go out any more often to the same places than anybody else, and so they're juggling a huge workload. So I think with what John said for the public info and so forth, we got the same goal of getting things done right the first time possible.
So in the fee, in the initial inspection fee, we have one reinspection put in. If they fail the initial inspection and the reinspection, the $75 is triggered. Is that my understanding?
Yes, when they fall in, they reschedule, they'll come up on track.
But it's after the, basically, it's the third inspection before it's triggered. Okay, so they would have to fail and fail again, and then come back for some of that. I think that's all for now, Mayor.
Just real quick, have the 2018 property tax assessments, are they fixed at this point?
No, those, this budget would be built on the one that came from January 1, nine months ago. So yes, so the assessments, appraisals fixed on January 1 of '18, look right for next '19 budget.
Okay, so we're not going to be impacted in this budget by the decrease in the tax base as a result of Harvey?
Not currently, I mean, like I said, those have been fixed, tests have been made, those are in that process, so people obviously could ask for it if they want, but I don't know how they can go back now at this point.
I know it's early, but have you guys made any initial estimates on the impact of the budget as a result of Harvey?
I'd hate to, it's speculation. We just finished up the preliminary damage assessment as a windshield tour, so, you know, call it 1,000 homes out of, out of the large inventory, so, you know, the businesses, et cetera, you know, and it's all been on the sales values, you know what that does to those, so that's a big load there. You're wiping out like this.
She's not here.
Okay, my only other thing was the debt, Councilman Elvin has already addressed that. Thank you.
Number Orgero?
I'll start off with the debt. If I remember correctly, please correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the 2007 bonds were sold with a tax, a possible tax increase of 13 cents. I know my tax rate has to say that. And we've got, and my point here is, we have to base what our future bond cost is going to be off a very conservative formula that's thrown out there. So I understand what's being said. I also understand if we look historically, that that tax rate's not going to, that that tax rate should be lower. Our values have been greater than the conservative numbers we use for our- Um, our values have been greater than the conservative numbers we use for our, our bonds, so that doesn't bother me, um, as, as much as it may bother others. What does bother me is that we have used a credit card because we cut our, our operating rate, and that's where I wanna see us put some more, um, money into and, and stop using bond funds to do what I think we should have cash on hand to do sometimes. Um, as far as a couple of questions looking forward, um, I, I'm guessing what our staffing costs were during Harvey and things of that nature. And I'm wondering if, if anybody remembers after Ike, what, how long it took FEMA to reimburse some of those funds? Because I, I think that could affect what we have on hand to, to do some things with. And also, if anybody has kinda looked at, I have a feeling the permitting fees that we'll talk about in, in the special meeting later on, I'm assuming that really wouldn't affect the budget because we hadn't planned, people hadn't, we hadn't built in repairs, so shouldn't be part of the budget. I just wanted to confirm that and have an idea of how long it might be before we're looking at getting reimbursed by FEMA. And that's all my questions.
I think, or if you're to follow, the concern to me is that the one that we will expend from, uh, some kind of useful shape, although we could be getting FEMA funds, I wonder how, are we gonna be able to come back and take a look at our budget to see if we can, uh, manage the rehabilitation of our community as a, in the proceeding of the budget process right now? That's just, just a conservative there. Let me move to Councilman Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't have much, um, but I'm, I'm assuming off of what Councilman Little just asked Clay, uh, we, we'll see, we'll see the FEMA and, and all the results of Harvey on our next tax.
From the property, uh, valuation, yes, sir. Building capital, we, we, uh, we also could keep an eye on sales tax. I mean, from everything we've read and seen so far, you know, hopefully we see a little bump, short-term, for construction and so forth, but, uh, you know, what that does longer term, you know, uh, I couldn't tell you right now, so.
And, and from the communication from others, we, we don't, we don't really see any, um, revenue from the construction, uh, permits, much revenue anyway, so we won't, we wouldn't see a huge, huge, uh, jump. Basically, with our vote laying on tonight, it wouldn't be a huge jump in just.
Yeah, our recommendation for, uh, existing home, uh, repairs, is that we waive the current fees, just trying to help people get back on track, et cetera. So, uh, obviously, we've got costs from staff and contracts, but, you know, we're trying to limit that for the existing place we have and for a thirty-day time period, so the idea of being, I mean, incentive to get up and running and also to be, uh, conscious of people's situations, so.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. So, some of the questions I had have already been answered, but one, one of my questions is, do, do we expect the, uh, the hot taxes to be more with the storm or less with the storm?
Well, uh, the hotel occupancy was good. Um, there was a convoluted process the state had for waiving those fees. I don't realistically think they're gonna use that, but you gotta keep in mind that goes with a special revenue fund that's got a big old fence around it, so that has no impact on operations or anything else like that. So, it's, it's a separate fund, they go directly into that, and, uh, like you said, that'll, that'll be what it'll be for, um, short and long-term.
Okay, thank you.
Argo?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll hold most of my comments till the, the meeting here in a little bit. Uh, but just, uh, I would point out, although Harvey, uh, the effects on the valuation, we won't be felt on that next budget cycle. Uh, typically, uh, for affected counties, homeowners are allowed to pay out their property taxes and mortgage payments, so we might see the change, uh, see the timing of the income as it comes in, starting in December and January, which could affect some of our investment income while carrying the high balance. Uh, just wanted to make sure we're all aware of that. And in terms of the reinspection, uh, Councilman Perez was questioning that, and, uh, I heard that we're reaching out to the contractors. Uh, I, I guess I'm still concerned about the small business guys and the mom and pops that are, that are still trying to, to do work and develop here in Pearland. Uh, so whatever we do to continue to communicate, uh, cover our process and what this reinspection looks like, will be beneficial. And also, if the rest of my comments till later, Mayor.
I can read your report?
Yes.
Let me kick it back to Clay for any wrap-up comments or?
Yes, sir. And complete, uh, this piece of the meeting, just on the budget public hearing itself.
That fixes you up pretty well. Let's move to item number six on the agenda, which lets me adjourn this public hearing. And in a light, light manner, open a stand-up public hearing, September the fifth, two-thousand-seventeen. Uh, moving in our work of our public hearing with a proposed two-thousand-seventeen tax rate for the two-thousand-seventeen, two-thousand-and-eighteen budget, the public hearing proposed that, and I'll ask Mr. Pearson to pick up from left point, and share us the state's staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is a, uh, formal public hearing on the tax rate, property tax rate for the city of Pearland for the upcoming fiscal year, and, uh, Mr. Carr will walk you through it on your own.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Uh, we'll start again without purpose, which is the basis of this year's budget. Uh, the tax rate divides twenty-one percent of our revenue in the general fund and supports, uh, the very purpose of what we do as an organization. Uh, the maximum tax rate, uh, as voted out by council, uh, is point seven zero. Um, this is different from what we just talked about, because this is the maximum, uh, we didn't make any changes reflected on this, but we are required to hold a public hearing at maximum tax rate. This does not obligate council, um, to actually adopt this specific tax rate. Uh, so the city council noted on the proposed maximum tax rate of point seven zero on August twenty-first, this would be an increase of point zero one eight eight cents from the current tax rate of point six eight point two. Uh, the proposed tax rate doesn't exceed the effective tax rate, and the rollback tax rate requiring two public hearings to be held on the proposed tax rate prior to adoption, first one being today, uh, the second one being next Monday. Uh, the notice was published in the reporter news, I apologize for that title there, and put on the city website and the municipal channel so that citizens can attend and provide public comment on their maximum tax rate. Uh, the effective tax rate is point six six seven zero six. Uh, the effective tax rate is a rate that generates the same amount of revenue in the new fiscal year on property taxes in the previous fiscal year, exclusive of service needs and cost growth. Uh, this does not include, uh, the new construction in the calculation. Uh, the rollback tax rate, uh, is point six eight five zero six. Uh, the rollback tax rate divides overall property into two categories, general fund and debt service. Uh, the rollback tax rate is the effective general fund rate plus eight percent increase on general fund taxes, plus the tax rate provided required to pay debt service. Uh, rollback tax rate is a rate that exceeded, provides voters the opportunity to limit a tax increase through petition, uh, through petition and a rollback election. Uh, so to have an overview, our current rate for F one seventeen is point six eight one two for one hundred dollars in valuation. Uh, the effective tax rate as discussed, point six six zero, uh, point six six seven zero six with a rollback rate of point six eight five oh six. Uh, the, it's as proposed here, the maximum point seven zero was voted out on August twenty-first. Uh, that means twenty-seven cents operations and forty-three cents on debt service. Uh, looking at the historical tax rate information, uh, this is a chart that Mr. Pearson went over earlier, updating with, uh, the point seven zero showing, uh, increase of point zero one eight eight cents in this current fiscal year and the split between the general fund and the debt service fund. Uh, the property tax allocation in here broken out in operations and maintenance on the top, with debt service on the bottom, uh, of the increase, uh, we actually see an increase of one cent on the debt, uh, with an increase of point zero two eight eight on the operations side. Um, on the general fund, uh, these, the, excuse me, property tax revenues account for roughly twenty-six percent of revenue. Uh, on the debt service, they account for ninety-six percent of that revenue. Uh, sample tax bills, so this is a summary table providing just some kind of blanket bills. I, I believe the valuation of this is a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Um, the valuation along the left-hand side there is how much the value went up that year. Um, and on the right-hand side, you see the dollar change on the percentage change, um, in, in individuals' tax bill. Um, now, we've provided, I believe, five total sample tax bills this year. This is something that we started to do last year, these are actual residences within Pearland, uh, that we pull and apply the new tax rates to show, uh, what exactly the impact would be. Um, here we show an example from Shadow Creek. Uh, this did hit the rollback, uh, with the total taxable value of two-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand. This individual resident would see an increase of two-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars on their bill. Uh, this individual within Dixie Woods, again, hitting the rollback, uh, I'm sorry, the homestead exemption with a value of one-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, just under one forty, uh, would see an increase of one-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand. This individual did not hit the, uh, the, uh, homestead exemption, uh, at three-hundred-and-five-thousand, would see an increase of one-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars on their tax bill. Uh, we also include the senior example here to show that a tax freeze, uh, does prevent the increase from affecting, uh, senior citizens. Uh, so with that, we can look over the next steps. Um, today, September fifth, is the first year on our, uh, tax rate. Uh, we'll be back here again next Monday night, September eleventh, for the second hearing on the tax rate. Uh, the first and second hearing will be held on September eighteenth and September twenty-fifth, respectively. With that, I'll ask back to you, Mr. Pearson.
Nothing, sir. We'll stand by. Uh, and again, it'd be appropriate to, uh, call for the citizen comments before, uh, council discussion on this piece.
Okay, I'll page your report.
Yes, sir.
Let's move in our agenda then to item number four, see if we have some services that would like to speak on this particular issue at this point. Is there anyone that always would like to make some comments or, in, in regard to this post-part of the budget? Here, does this want to get bit? That'll get you shifted. Okay. Moving in our agenda then to item number five, which should let the council, uh, do the end of that a few comments, and so, with Councilman Carr, uh, we'll go down to the council.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'll get to all my comments.
No comments at this point?
Next, Mr. Pearson.
Okay. Got another one?
Um, yeah, I'm not really in favor of the, uh, new proposed, uh, I voted against it. Um, I'll vote against it this next time. I like the point six eight, the option two that was given to us. Um, like I said before, we didn't get here overnight, and we're not gonna get where we need to be overnight. Um, I like this step approach, um, and, uh, I, I'm not real happy with this.
Okay, got to read?
Hold on, I'll answer.
Okay. Argo?
I'll hold my comments.
Little? No comment? Perez?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a little torn. Um, I do think we need to reinvest. I think that, um, our performance during Harvey compared to some of our neighboring studies is, um, um, an example of, uh, how a city for infrastructure deals with, um, not just the routine, but the extreme if you invest in it. Um, you know, but, um, you know, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I'm, I'm comfortable going above the low end. Um, you know, I think I just need to talk a little bit, um, and go through a little bit more of the, um, of what the, what the impacts of Harvey are gonna be. I don't, I'm, I'm concerned about doing it reactively, and then if we do get quick reimbursement and we take the money out of people's pockets, we didn't necessarily need to. Um, it's not that I don't trust the, the concern, it's just, I think I just need to think on it a little bit more. Um, I, I was comfortable with the six eight. I think, um, I'm kinda leaning towards the six eight, and then maybe taking in a more step approach with some of the expenditures, uh, not implementing them initially in the first fiscal year. Uh, I, I can't say I've decided on that, I just think I need to have a little bit more conversation on it before I can, I can get to the points at it. That's it, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Moore?
Yeah. I guess the thing that concerns me, uh, on the budget, several things, but, uh, getting back to a decent area within the city, I think it's gonna be a pretty long step to do it. I don't think we're gonna do it next year, I don't think we're gonna do it the year after. I think rebuilding is probably a three-year process to be able to do it. And, and I guess, I think one of the council members hit on, uh, the other thing, but, uh, not giving the money in, uh, backing on the taxes. And I don't think that's gonna happen. I think, you know, during the last storm, we had a delay of getting money in, and people just couldn't pay the taxes. I mean, I saw, too, be a lot of people leaving out from their home, all they had was one black plastic sack. And those people are gone, they're in Bayou County or they're in Dallas County. Uh, you know, you don't know when they're gonna come back, you don't know when they're gonna come, what they come back to. Uh, do they have a job when they come back? Is their house in place when they come back? And what have you? And finding appliances and doing the work and everything they need to do, uh, I think that's gonna supersede anything if they think about paying taxes, so they're gonna ask the grace of that. So, I think the revenue coming into the city over the next twelve months is gonna be sporadic. I don't, I don't think we're gonna have revenue stream that we're really looking at, uh, that we're budgeting for in here, so. That's one of the biggest concerns, a lot of people left out, uh, they have nothing to come back to. And I don't know if FEMA's gonna come in, try to buy the property, which is making all the tax roll, and, uh, all we have to do is call it maintenance and take care of it. So, uh, you know, those are the concerns that I have, because, you know, we can protect revenue, all we want to, but, uh, I think over the next year, year, you're gonna see how the revenue is actually gonna be. I know the last storm we had, with the revenue came in various way, uh, and there's some payments, you know, I'm paying the taxes, so. That's all I have about that.
Okay, let's let our staff respond to those indeed.
You know, I, I've emphasized, and we're in the same boat, I mean, with the unknowns, the impact of the storm, et cetera, just, uh, you know, felt like, um, we've got work to do, we need to replenish the, uh, uh, fund balance, uh, et cetera, et cetera, which, you know, leads to that conclusion and, and the, uh, unknowns and, and, Aaron, I guess, on the side of caution, and, you know, thinking that we can dial that back based once, you know, we're secure next year, but, uh, understand and, you know, uh, we're also figuring in that, uh, you know, the, the new pay plan, uh, factor that was discussed and trying to get going on that, uh, as rapidly as possible, but, uh, we can obviously, you know, look forward wherever direction the council gives and we'll implement that, so.
Okay. Mayor, if I can. Clay, if you don't have anything at, uh, at the level, uh, senior level of looking at the budget and saying, okay, if this does hurt the next two to three months, how would it fare back, what would we have to cut back on in order to make it up to the, sort of thing?
So, you're saying like if sales tax didn't get where we wanted to, et cetera? And the property tax, as, you know, was suggested, once you have the rate, you're, you're gonna get that amount, and that, the information about the timing is new, but, you know, that's just assuming you're gonna get whatever you're gonna get in. Um, so, I guess the question would be if sales tax didn't perform or building permit fees, that's another big chunk we haven't even talked about, just regular permit, permit fees. Um, you know, if we, you know, two, three months got into this budget and, and got through month for that every month, wasn't tracking where we wanted to, um, we would have to look at any of the new positions, um, and look at further deferring those. Uh, and then the next spot that is of any substance, uh, we have flexibility on, is our streets and sidewalks reinvestment. I mean, those are the, unfortunately, the go-tos when we talk about real money. Uh, everything else is, you know, basically nibbling around the edges and not saying that doesn't matter, but that's what's needed.
Well, and that's what, you know, that's what I'm talking about, meaning realistically, you know, I think there should be some kind of plan in place. If this don't come to pass, that what we're looking at on budget, you know, where are you coming back from? What are you gonna be able to do to downsize in a period of time, you know, to, uh, get there? I mean, it's just, uh, another exercise, I think, in, in the budget process that you look at, especially what we went through. what we went through right now, you wouldn't do it probably in a normal year, but this is not a normal year. And my concern is, there's another storm sitting out there right now, and we don't know where it's going as of yet. And, you know, even if it goes to the East Coast and Florida and the East Coast, that's going to attract FEMA away from here, I'm sure, on some of that. I don't have any, I got a call out of the land the other day, and I had him, I believe it was, and they're mobilizing to help FEMA. They got on a federal contract, but they're setting a link now, they don't really have to go. So, but I think it's good practice, you know, whether you need it or not, you know, if you go into a process like this, you need some kind of fallback strategy to your plan to take a look at, you know, if it does, this is what we say was reduced that would not impact the city and the residents in cities.
Councilmember Owens, I believe, our financial policies talk specifically about what areas we would look at in that particular situation. For example, we might start with capital improvements, supplemental capital, supplemental request, and then we kind of go from there. So there are guidelines in our financial policy that tells us exactly where to look at, depending on the circumstance.
Okay. Clay, if I could remind me, what are the punitive measures we go with all of the fund balance, and when do those kick in?
Well, punitive means there's no legal, I think, you know, it's just a solid practice, man, or it's there for natural disasters, things like this, right? But you also need a plan to replenish that and get it back up. You know, the easiest thing is, you know, just, we would lose flexibility if, you know, we had another storm or other issues, if we didn't have any liquidity or something like that, we had to put a short-term borrower or something ugly like that. And then the credit raters, we're going to be looking at that. I mean, they, we talked to them about fund balance, we talked about plan drawdowns, and they know what our minimum policy is, but they would look at, you know, even if you went down it for good reasons, what are you doing to recover and get back to that? What's your plan to get back to a sound footing?
So I think, I mean, if I can bracket the discussion, it's whether, you know, we're willing to be, if we go to the point seven, we're going to be preemptive because we have unknowns for this fiscal year, and we'd be potentially unwilling, for lack of a better word, to go into debt, deal with the unknowns. And I think I just did have a side conversation about what's punitive, what's punitive to, if we go into those, in the debt, when those punitive measures take effect, do we have the ability to still increase the revenue with the point six-eight, but if we have some hiccups and we have to go below fund balance, would we have the ability to recover that in the next fiscal year, or we can stay assistance if needed, until we find out full ramifications of, to our budget, with related to Harvey, and if that gets, or if one of these other storms develops and comes in? I think, again, I just see it as a debt versus revenue argument, which we have every year. I'm willing to do what we need to do in order to make sure that we are not, not going to avoid anything that hurts us, but I'm not sure that I understand, and I'm not sure that we have the ability at this point to fully understand what that is. So that's kind of where I'm, where I pass, Clay.
Does staff have any further comment at this point?
No, sir, thanks for the question.
Okay, let's, council member, any further questions for our comments? Thank you, David. Audience, please. We will close this. Okay, Senator Gary, at seven twenty-six. Okay, let's move to a series of special meetings, all four. There will actually be five special council meetings at this point. And let me start opening these up, and we'll take these one at a time. First one is Councilmember Carrbone, if you could sit first, number one, one question.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution R. two-zero-one-seventy-eight, so move.
Second. Motion and a second, we're discussing, staff report.
Yes, sir. We, there is precedent for sometime this, I guess, with last hurricane storms, and we'd recommend that the council formalize a resolution that the city waive its building permit fees for repair of homes and businesses on existing properties for the next thirty days. So that would be our permit fees, inclusive of permitting and inspections, and as I listed earlier, just a way to help people out, or encourage them to get permits. It's in everybody's best interest that that's done, permits are required, and let that be done safely and soundly, and as quickly as possible.
Okay. Councilmember, any question to come in on this side? You want to, you want to, uh, Councilmember Carrbone, give me?
No, sir.
Uh, Senator Owen?
No.
Senator Reed?
No, Mayor.
Councilmember Carrbone?
I, I do have one question. I'm just wondering on thirty days, and I guess my concern is, I'll be honest, I'm thankful that since I've owned a home, I haven't had to go through repairing it from a storm, but I know every time we get this, we're going to have a ton of contractors coming in from out of state. I know personally, I would rather use someone local, and that may take some time to get them in. I know somebody I talked to today, they're telling them their house needs to dry out two weeks before they can even, you know, get started on it. So extending that past thirty days, would that be an issue, or has that been thought of?
You know, the thing I'd say is, maybe let us, I think it behooves us all to put that out there for the thirty, and let's see how it's going, and maybe come back to you and say, you know, two weeks. It's kind of like the briefing coming up there, we need to, you know, put a deadline out there, and just can't drag on forever, but I also hear what you're saying. You know, I, by the same token, I think there's a lot of people moving, and they're choosing to get after it, or we're wishing permits on Friday, so, you know, it's not going to be everybody.
I understand, and I'm fine with that as long as we have the ability, and that everybody's willing to look at it again, maybe.
That's a issue, I'll second.
If a home is just in need of concrete rock and floor repairs, is a permit required?
I defer to my friend, Mr. McDonald.
If you're just repairing your floors or doing your carpet, your floors, or your sheetrock, you don't need a permit. And we did put out on the website today, on Facebook, a list of repairs that could be done without a permit. And with contractors, we are encouraging everybody to make sure their contractor knows what information to say.
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Orno, and that, you know, as long as we have a mechanism in place, we can do a similar vote. I don't think thirty days is going to be long enough. If y'all feel comfortable that, you know, you see it cooling off at the end of thirty days, or you see it, you know, it dead in the last week in the thirty days, and you think it's not worth extending, you know, I'd like to, I'd like for us to be presented that information, you know, maybe in thirty days, but I don't personally think that thirty days is going to be long enough period. But I'm comfortable doing it in thirty-day increments with these individual, individual With respect to the permitting fees, does that include, are we waiving the permitting fees? Are we waiving, maybe, you know, if somebody wants a plan review for whatever reason?
Yes, a plan review, and we're trying to do all the plan reviews at the desk, so that we're not holding them back. The only thing that we would take and send back to inspectors or the planning, is that gets into the fifty percent rule, if the cost of improvements exceeds fifty percent of value, the structure, then we have to look at, not conform, we have to look at FEMA regulations before we issue the permit.
I mean, with respect to the investment, are we talking about waiving fees associated with just repairing the home, or are we waiving fees with existing property?
Just repairs. If we're looking at them for repairs, that would be consistent with damage from, from storm.
Because we wouldn't run them at fifty percent unless they're doing an expansion, and, I mean, repairs should be, I mean, pretty poor.
It depends, so with some of your older homes, you know, it may have a lower structural value, and then when you get into the walls, which tends to electrical, or et cetera, it's still, it's not necessarily the permanent value of the home, it's the repair value, right? So that you may not, so if we're close to that value, and we see that there may be an issue, we might have to ask for some supporting documentation to ensure network compliance with the National Flood and Dirt Program regulations.
Are we giving them, or do we have a network that would relatively cheap or free resource for them? I think what I'm worried about is, some of the people who have the lower home values, they are, you know, a home that's a hundred thousand dollars in value, and they're, they have fifty-six thousand dollars in repair to be, we're holding that fifty percent threshold. They're in the older subdivision, an older home that's below the, like, your floodplanning, but we traded through NFIP that they've got to raise the home twelve inches above the floodplanning elevation. Obviously, that's not affordable, but if they had consultants who could tell them, you know, if you do this, or if you do this, or form this, you know, we can evaluate this alternative, but they may not have access or the money to be able to find a consultant. Do we have, I mean, has there been, has there been any network volunteers who are willing to, to help with that?
We haven't heard that was something we can look at. There's two fifty percent rules, there's a non-conforming rise here from your structure below fifty percent, you can't repair it unless you bring in consultants. Now, with that, you can take it to the zoning board adjustment and ask for impairments, but with the National Flood and Dirt Program, that's a federal regulation that we can't play with because we get audited annually by FEMA, and if we don't show that we've enforced the provision properly, that can affect our CRS rating, which affects the insurance rating that's in place. So we have to be careful about how we, but we can look to see if there are crews out there, volunteers who might help those find ways to maximize their.
Yeah, my concern, I think, it's inversely impactful to people with a lower value of homes, to people who can't afford to be able to really go out and find the resources to, to find the tricks and the code to get the valuations lower, even though that, have anybody who can tell them that that trick is there. I don't know what we have, but if there's a, if there's a way that we can find or reach out to potential, and I'm happy to help, reach out to potential consultants, you can help, anything that could find a trick somewhere where they can lower the valuation so they don't trick, install, trick those mechanisms, those people wouldn't know what to do.
Reach out, see if you can find some, some assistance.
And again, plan review, permitting inspections, all of those, and everything associated with getting that house back and, back up and running. You mentioned there's something on the website. Have we, have we created a document, or is there something on the way? I'm not checked to see, so I apologize. But is there something that we're communicating with people? The importance of making sure that that contractor is permitting, and make sure that they're not, the permitting process is there to protect them and not to delay the process?
We put out a press release last week that went through what we were waiving, why the importance of having a lesser contractor was, and the importance of even your property inspected, so we have the definition out there, of course.
Thank you, Mayor.
Senator Lawrence?
So doing this, we're just waiving a fee for the permit, right? We're still doing some inspection in order?
We'll still do, we'll still do inspection, we'll still be sending our guys out there, we're just uncharted.
Okay, because I know there's probably some kind of reaction off the windstorm, it's a little bit different, and so the windstorm insurance, and they're different, that, you know, that you do in construction, any repairs, so that's one concern. I am not very sure that we still are doing the inspection activity, which is one of these areas, this one.
I know Sarah has done a good job in the publicizing this, the need for a building for that, because proof of building for that comes in inspection. And if you have, I know a lot of, what do you call these guys, a string owner around front of buying a job like this out of the Caribbean, so they could, a person, so invisible names on this professional page, but they, if they issue, if they go into a job without a permit, and it turns out bad, and you didn't follow laws, that you don't have a, you don't understand, but you do, at least there was a permit with an inspection, with the building permit, to catch all these people that need it for their parents to get one, so I think you're making that part of us. Do you have any comment to play on this right now?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, we did have a motion and a second on form, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carrbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Orno?
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Councilmember Brad?
Aye.
Councilmember Rollin?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-seven fifty-dash-one-seventy-eight is approved, seven to zero.
Okay, let's move to the unit number two. Councilmember Moore, if you present this for our consideration.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R. two-zero-one-seven-dash-one-seven-nine, so move.
Second.
Motion and a second, we're discussing, staff report.
So, degree removal from the storm is a major undertaking and a big deal, we need to do it right and expeditiously as possible. We did have a contract in place, but found out late Thursday or Friday that there's some flaws in the way that was done technically, and that might have precluded our reimbursement. So we went through emergency procurements, staff actually came in yesterday, facilitated that, we have a recommendation here for you, and the stretch, and I'll walk you through at least a overview of that. Thank you, Mr. Pearson. We have two contracts in front of you tonight, one for degree removal, and the other one for degree monitoring, both of which are required to, to be eligible for public assistance as we move forward for degree removal. We passed out two memos tonight that have more details in there, because we just took the bids late yesterday and today on this. I'll cover the degree removal first. The city had bid and awarded a contract in 2015, that's based on best value. TDM, which is Texas Department of Emergency Management, along with FEMA, in reviewing that, determined that three solicitation steps did not include some of the federally required documents. So then we looked towards HJC and some cooperative purchasing contracts that are available. Issues, HJC is also having similar issues, not the exact ones, but similar issues with the contracts that they have out there. So basically, what the TDM recommendation was, was to rebid under an emergency procurement process, which, you know, we can do at seventy-two hours. Still do our advertising, still solicit the historically underutilized businesses, and meet all those steps, and so we've gone through that. It's a best value evaluation, and basically the bids resulted in the same recommendation we had in 2015 for the primary and secondary contractors, however slightly higher pricing. On the degree monitoring, basically on that one, we were utilizing the cooperative contract with HJC. HJC's contract was determined not to meet certain federal requirements regarding restricting competition and affirmative steps. And TDM and FEMA reviewed all that, and basically determined that those issues could not be cured by any amendments to that. And so again, they recommended we rebid this under an emergency procurement. Again, it was done under best value, and it's very important to have a highly qualified firm doing your degree monitoring, as they basically develop and document all of the, what is done as far as degree removal, that's all the documentation we, that's required for us to turn in for public assistance through TDM and FEMA. So it's very important that that's done properly and done well. Again, the bids resulted in the same recommendation for degree monitoring, a slightly higher Some of the urgency of this, of course, is that we want to, of course, remove the degree as quickly as possible in front of our residents and businesses. In addition to that, under the, under the disaster declaration, the federal government has increased the reimbursement from eighty-five percent to ninety percent on degree removal for the first thirty days, and I believe that started on September twenty-fifth, so the clock is ticking on that. I believe that started on September twenty-fifth, so the clock is ticking on that. After thirty days, the reimbursement amount drops, so we need to get this moving as quickly as possible. Um, and of course, the existing contracts, if we were to move forward with those, have issues with that, the reimbursement of the public assistance. Uh, the schedule, if we award tonight, everybody's ramped up and ready to go and start debris removal as early as tomorrow. And I do want to, uh, thank our staff that worked on this through the weekend, putting the bid documents together late last week, getting those out, putting the bid out there, answering their questions and taking in the bids and evaluating those. Bob Pierce, Eric Wilson, Reverend Lee, David Kent, Chris Olia, a lot of hours in on this unexpected need that we had and I believe bringing back that package for us to move forward. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Director, picture report?
Yes, sir.
What's going on for the board? How do I have any question? For the board?
I have any questions with respect to the, uh, the procurement process. I'd also like to thank staff for doing this emergency process. Just to help with the communication, um, I've heard people have concerns about, as we issued out the memo that says separate in this manner, uh, there is some rumors going around with the trash. The debris is not separated and the city is not going to pick it up. In scope of the contractor, are there any provisions that the contractor has to refuse to pick up anything? Is there anything that they're not allowed to pick up or that they've decided, or they can, they have some ability to refuse, um, picking up of any of the, or?
I'm going to ask Eric, someone with a little bit more, his knowledge of the contract.
Yeah, municipal solid waste, uh, your basic household trash will continue to be picked up by waste management. The storm-related debris will be picked up by Series Environmental. And as the document that we've been circulating indicates, do not put it in plastic bags, sort it into the various categories because this is all tracked by the monitoring firm and then it's reviewed by FEMA to ensure that it's all handled in its proper manner.
So a lot of people that are cutting this stuff out, volunteers, some of them have seen the document, some of them haven't. Uh, to be honest with you, most of the stuff's just getting stacked. You know, I, I think idealistically, we'd love to have it separated. My concern is, is there a way that the debris contractor can refuse to pick it up if it's not sorted or if there's any other issues associated with the debris? I just don't want to have somebody who is, again, people who are most affected by this are the, the non-sophisticates who don't really have the provisions to go through all this stuff or nor they may have power to separate it. So I don't want to have one person who's got the debris pile that they're stuck with while everybody else has got it. So are there provisions in the contract with it, the contract to refuse to pick it up?
Let me answer it this way, we will work with anybody that has challenges in the way the material was placed. Within the right way, our goal is to get the city cleaned up, to get everybody's lives back to normal as painlessly as possible. And we will work with the residents to get to where we need to.
And work with the contractor to make sure that they're communicating in as soft a way as possible?
Now, once we have staff already out, um, reviewing the debris, I think that, uh, since they're getting out ahead of what the contractor, is that something that they can also communicate and identify if we have those issues and we can take care of those in advance of the contractor coming through?
Thanks, Doc.
Number one?
No comment.
No, or no?
A question for the contractor, are they in the room? Where will this debris be going?
David Price?
Sorry. While, while you're making your way up here, um, I, I just want to get this right. We had federal and state regulations on the bid process that we rebid, got the exact same contractors for a higher price and they're going to pay ninety percent of the cost. Just want to clarify that.
Thank you.
Not to that one, too, where the debris is going.
My name is David Price, of Series Environmental Services, and my task is to do your community as you recover from this disaster. Uh, we appreciate the work that we're going to do. And to answer your question, we, I looked over and signed some applications for landfills, which I believe are going to be paid by us and then reimburse that cost with a markup. And, uh, I need to talk some more with our operational people about the current plans that I understand are primarily taken to Dixie Farm Road landfill, I believe. And, uh, and I believe there's also perhaps a WCA landfill. But.
In Helvin, possibly?
Pardon me?
In Helvin, possibly?
Possibly.
Yeah, okay.
But what I've heard is the Dixie Farm landfill. Operationally, uh, if there's any changes, we would let, uh, the city know and, uh, work with the city to make sure we're taking it to the best place.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Number Reed?
Thank you, Mayor, I think there's someone else that came up.
Just presenting myself, if you have any monitoring questions.
Oh, okay. I definitely want to thank staff for coming in on the weekend and doing the things that, that we did to put this together. My only question, you know, I guess it kind of goes along with Councilmember Holden's last comment, was, you know, we, we are going with someone else that we know, I guess, that we've done work with, and looking at this point system. With specifically with Crowder. How was it that their technical approach and their experience, um, I guess, kind of came in to their detriment? And essentially, it seems like that that's why they lost, was with experience and technical approach. What, what technical approach is there to, uh, to this, to this whole debris pickup?
A lot of that, excuse me, Councilmember Reed, is we take a look at what's presented. Is that some give more level of detail on how they're going to manage, how they're going to take a look at it. And so that's how we break, we have certain criteria that we look at during the bid process that we have laid out and we need to answer questions on and provide detail. And some of those, it can come down to just a few paragraphs, it can come down to a few things that just weigh the difference. So that's, that's really, really what it comes down to, is that as we're looking at it, have they given the best that's much as possible, provided a wholesome outlook so that we can understand that.
So then that's, that's with technical, then experience, are they, like, less, they've been in business less amount of times? Reason, reason why I'm pointing out Crowder specifically is because they were the cheapest bid or lowest bid. And so I'm looking at it the right way, cost valuation total, three point six million.
When you're taking a look at the bids, as we do, we just put a unit cost and determine, uh, a amount so that we can have a know what to do against. Those are the grades based on what you really have there, what comes out from picking up the debris and then also through a debris monitoring contract as they look at it. So that would be based, just to be an idea of what it was. So to answer your question, it's just a combination of things, as a group of five of us are sitting there tonight, taking a look at these and what our opinion is and who answered the questions the best. We don't know the price, we don't look at the price until the very end. Okay, that, that's part of why we do a competitive seal proposal, the best value, is so that we who are evaluating are evaluated specifically on the criteria that's set forth on the questions that they ask. Then we see the numbers coming after that, so we know who the bid is at that time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Number four?
So just to clarify, we'll prove this tonight, if it is approved and trucks will be out picking up tomorrow, about any estimates on how long the process will be? And, and really, so when, when somebody contacts us and they say, hey, it's been sitting out there for X many days, do we have, uh, I guess, what is the, the total timeframe we expect? And how, how are we going to communicate and update that to the citizens?
So our, our goal is to have as much of this picked up as possible within that thirty-day timeframe when the reimbursement amount is the highest. And I think that's what we've been, what we'll push out there in our communications is that here's the end date. Of course, that doesn't mean we won't go take care of something that comes out there after that end date. But that'll be what we communicate to try to get the highest percentage we, uh, we can at that point. We think we can, you know, get above the ninety percent range with that. So that's the overall goal, as far as, uh, the specifics on the first pass through the entire city. I'll, I'll see if anyone else has a precise, I don't know that we'll have a precise answer on that, but because we're still in somewhat of the evaluation phase of how much is out there. But the, the instructions are going to be to hit the highest impacted areas first and then move from there. But Eric, do you have, anyone else have anything to add on that?
Yes, uh, typically, the way this works, the material started coming out quite early. The contractor will make a pass, come through a given street, pull all the material. Then the spokes are coming in that have time to get it back to their process, to their homes. More material's going to come out and this process will continue. And typically, uh, the contractor will make three to five passes down the same street to pick up material. And hopefully, if we can get that ninety, ninety-five percentile done within the first thirty days, we will be doing very good in my opinion.
That's good. Do we know about how many trucks will be running through there?
I believe we're starting out with, uh, four hundred yarders and that will move up to six if needed.
Thank you.
Big trucks.
Staff, with that information, do you have a response to that question? Just to curiosity, uh, Eric, when you're talking about putting them in different piles, vegetation and what? And you're talking about the landfill in Dixie Farm Road and then the one in the alley. Just, uh, refrigerators and stoves and ovens and all of that, does that go in that landfill?
White, yes, sir.
So why does it have to be separate?
Federal requirement. The bill. Gas and, and also, uh, for materials that, that contain gas, electrical motors, example, Freon, you have to remove the Freon prior to disposal, so they have to be where they can access them to do that.
Mayor, um, when we set up the agenda, these were generic while the process was going through. Uh, and Darren, correct, who is all of we mentioned the vendors and the motion amendments as?
Yes, I was going to recommend that we send the modified motions to, to name the, uh, primary vendor and then of course the secondary vendor, uh, as part of the motion that way. Because right now, as, as Clay indicated, that we're not part of the motion, we didn't know what was going to be.
Are you comfortable with amending the motion for us a second? Or so move, I, I will so move your table.
Will you pull it up here?
I want to make sure we get this correct.
Darren, if you have the memo in front of you.
Yeah, I've got the page eleven, it's C R resolution. Now, we just need to change the dates. Uh, yes, I'd recommend modifying the motion, uh, to award the purchase of a debris management services contract to Sarah's Environmental as a primary contractor and Crowder Gulf LLC as a secondary contract. And, uh, Trey, do you want to indicate for the, I don't think we need to indicate the time period at this time.
So move, second.
We're amending a motion, this is amended motion.
Get a second.
Yes.
We have a second?
Yes.
Uh, yes, sir, any discussion on amended motion? Here it is done, Mr. Secretary, we have amended motion on the table.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Roland?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Uh, Moore, excuse me. I don't know.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Motion carried, uh, amended seven to zero.
Okay, now we have amended motion on the table for, uh, perfect. Motion, a second?
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Roland?
Aye.
Resolution twenty seventeen one seventy-nine was approved, as amended, seven to zero.
Looking at our agenda, item three, uh, Councilmember Reed, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, consideration possible action resolution number R twenty seventeen dash ninety-two, so move. Second.
We have a motion, a second, we have a discussion, uh, staff report.
Would that be the same deal to put in the vendors?
Yes. Yes, it'll be the same, I guess, if, if we go ahead and.
Let's take care of action, uh, number three, that's.
Yes, here, we recommend a motion to, uh, award a unit supply bid for the purchase of managed, debris management services to, excuse me. To Tetra Tech. To Tetra Tech.
So move.
Second. Motion, a second for a discussion. Staff report.
I can answer.
We have a motion, staff report.
Um, Mr. Pearson described both the debris pickup and the monitoring as the technical part of that.
Darren?
Just one.
We have a motion, a second on the floor, a second service.
One, one, so the motion, you said debris management, but this was debris monitoring, is that?
I'm sorry, debris, uh, monitoring. For clarification, that was for debris monitoring services. Thank you for that correction.
We could have, uh, number four?
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Roland?
Aye.
And then the three, seven to zero.
Which means we do have amended motion on the table? We have a second, motion, a second on that, a second.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Roland?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Roland?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Resolution twenty seventeen dash one eighty-two was approved, seven to zero, as amended.
Lack of clarification, draft that, list item four, for, and, uh, this is, because we put in discussion regarding the possible suspensions and regulations regarding replacements, trailers and recreational vehicles from those listed, probably severely damaged by hurricane破坏. And, uh, our staff, do you think that, please?
Thanks, sir. Um, this is, uh, actually, I have just trained some council feedback, um, and how we want to handle these. And Colonel, Mr. McDonald, he'll describe for the topic and give some options, parameters, that's what I want to think about and give some feedback, so we can bring you back something on the eleventh of the eighteen.
Uh, thank you, sir. The, uh, right now, the UDC doesn't allow replacement of trailers for accessory use in a sixty-day period. Uh, and this, this was not seen, though, to be used as much as we anticipated because now with the storm, we've already been getting calls with regard to people placing trailers, RVs in the yard, water, on the ground and repair. We actually already have a few that have been set up. Code enforcement's out there right now, trying to just keep tabs on where they are and have gone in. And so before this kind of gets out of hand, we, we propose, uh, if you're interested in bringing back a resolution, that would set some parameters on length of time, on, for registering them with the city so we know where they are and what we can tie them to, permits being issued to contractors, company that working in the house, that they were good before, the house's CO'd, et cetera. I guess we have a better handle on, on these going in. Just want to introduce that on this process.
Okay. We've got the good information here, uh, we, as a council, we still have a council with, uh, Councilmember Carbone.
I don't see any problem with that. I guess one clarifying question, if someone's mother-in-law was to show up for arrival of a new child, she wouldn't be able to park anywhere near my house, certainly.
That's a sad thing.
But no, I, I think this is good, I, I like kind of the, the generic or the proposed language. I think it makes sense to tie it to, uh, back to when the COs issued, so that this isn't an issue that dragged on forever. But, uh, I think it makes sense to both the residents and the businesses.
Senator Reed?
I have no comment.
I guess I will come back, I have to say, uh, that the street, there is a house that has a trailer that's renewed in the neighborhood there, and there's also one pulled up parked on the driveway on the, on the street. So we, we're trying to avoid that, it's, uh, through this process, as I understand it.
Yes, sir.
And what you do, you have somebody going by and doing an observation and a follow-up for, uh, traffic control devices.
Well, we would, uh, we would ask that be placed at home property, uh, specifically on the driveway and off, off the grass. We would ask, we're looking at, if they have them come in, these registers, we know where they are, know that they apply for permanent repairs, and then we would work with code enforcement to ensure that they're set up properly and that the timeline is a little longer.
Okay. Councilmember Moore, come on?
Uh, I'll, I'll just start by saying I don't like the regulation at all, so I'd like to just totally get rid of it. Uh, when I put it.
What I put in my yard is my business and not the government's, but that's just my take on it. I do have an issue with it being on the side of the repairs. We've got homes with small driveways, and if I'm trying to get equipment in and out of my house, that trailer could possibly hinder that. And if my neighbor says, look, I don't have damage, you can put it in my yard or my driveway, I'd like to be able to allow that. I know somebody personally that, the person that they contacted said, look, I don't have room in my driveway, but let me talk to my neighbor, and they're out there. So I'd like to look at some flexibility for that, but as you can imagine, I wanna be as flexible as possible with this. Let HOAs deal with it. I just don't think some of the city should have been involved with to begin with, but we are, so let's make it as easy as possible on these vehicles they try to recover. Thank you.
Councilmember Orno, kind of touch on this. How do you guys see this interplaying with the HOA restrictions that I'm having?
Well, again, we have to, each individual, to check with their HOA and see if that would be appropriate or not. We don't enforce HOA regulations until we're.
If you've ever dealt with HOA, who knows a little more like the odds of activation? I was president of one.
You should say you're a doctor.
No. Every time I got a point, I hit this.
Councilmember Reed?
Do we have a variance process that we can deal with or?
We can, and we'll look at options, whether it be the staff or some sort of authority office, we can look at the, understanding the concerns and then.
Is there a way that I could amend the motion so that the initial provision is in there?
There's no motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, tonight's just a discussion. We're gonna be bringing it back next Monday night for consideration.
So when we present it, we can present it with a stack level variance, where y'all can take a look at it. If somebody has an agreement, a letter or something with their neighbor that says, I got an empty lot, you can put it there, and y'all can, without a lot of your options.
Yes, sir. I believe the draft that we included is kind of an option that we're looking at includes some flexibility at staff level to deal with.
Aye, thank you.
Yeah, the only thing I am, I am president of HOA.
I'm sorry.
And this goes against our bylaws.
For sure.
And I think, you know, we have maybe the least of most of the HOAs, no?
Well, that's that.
Is there any way that once this is approved, we can send a copy of that to the HOAs on the West Side?
We can reach out to the HOAs that we have.
It's in, during everyone's bylaws that they have, not during March, though, so we give them a mention, so I think we do all that.
Okay. One more quick thing. Are you gonna allow residences that were affected by RV to do the same thing?
We were only considering residential's within the current code, I believe. They can have it up for two weeks at a time for a certain amount total, but that is an option we can look at if that's something council would like to see.
Couldn't they have a construction trailer?
They're allowed a construction trailer, yeah.
Great, looks like, uh, Councilmember Stevens here, I guess we'll swing down next Monday night if we have a, have an item on the agenda for this.
Yes, sir. We'll put together a resolution. Just so clear about last day about the, I don't know if you're worried or want occupancy on commercial properties. I mean, construction trailers are one thing, but a typical project, you wouldn't have people sleeping out over at the job site on a commercial property. Is that what you're looking at, or you want to have?
Well, let's look at the sample resolution you borrowed from Galveston County, Reverend Hurley and I, and it only pertains to commercial businesses.
We were looking at focusing on the residential, not, because the commercial, it does have some built-in allowance for accessory uses as well as construction trailers, if their business is to the point where they need that, that we, I think by now, they're covered. We're looking mainly at those people who may have lost their homes and don't have a place to go, who already have a trailer or an RV, that they can give up that.
Okay, thank you.
You'll be bringing that back. There, you'll be bringing this back for the most of the night.
It'll be coming back next Monday night with a resolution for the council to consider that.
Okay. Okay, then, making the record, I guess we need to move into number five. Council, good discussion regarding discussion number four, just for your 2017.
So Mayor, this opportunity, council has any direct feedback? I mean, you gave us some comments. There's one thing, if you'd like to arrive at some consensus on the garage sale fees, that's one specific. The rest, what I understand, is maybe some, get a better feel for, as we try to understand the impact from the storm and so forth and the unbalance, all the implications there. But really, this is your time. We did have issues last time. You mentioned the impact fee by the motor pool and library. Number Presby, could you, you asked about that, so again, if we can get some discussion and closure on these, I think that'd help all of us to narrow down on issues and, you know, bring some resolutions.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thanks, Mayor. So this is where we get all, do all of our comments. I'm gonna be a little lengthy. First off, I wanna say thank you to each and every employee with the city. Y'all did fabulous work throughout the storm, which I don't wanna take any glory away from you, because what you did to keep the city running, to keep the city from flooding, our neighboring city next to us, Friendswood, was terrible. We did a fantastic job, we have great drainage, and this storm right here proved it. I'm sorry for the people who did lose or did get flooded. There was some people that did get flooded in the city, but the majority of the city fared very, very well. So thank you for that. But I'll start with, the tax rate back in 2007 with the bond was never increased, so we never got the money that we needed really to do all the stuff that was in that bond. But we did all that stuff in that bond anyways, at a higher rate than what it all was ever projected or budgeted to be done. Therefore, we did fall behind. We're behind now. This has been a building process to get where we are. We have not done it overnight. We've had a lot of stuff that has lapsed and lapsed, and we did not replace or upgrade a lot of things. And again, 2007 bond, we did not increase the tax that went along with that bond to do all those projects. We've added police, we've added fire, we've added police vehicles, we've increased the amount we're putting forth, streets and sidewalks, even though we're very, very far away from where we need to be to complete that. And again, we've done, I feel we're on the right road, we're nowhere close to where we need to be, but we're on the right road to where we need to be to accomplish a lot of this. It's been, it's been some time now since we've been trying to get back to a process of where we need to be, putting forth money to all of the things that we need to put forth to. And it's, some of the stuff we've done, we've tried to pay off some of the debt with overages from at the end of the year. We've tried to reduce some of our loans that have been taken out for 20, 25 years to 20 years so that we can get them paid off and save, you know, roughly, I don't know, four to three million dollars per loan on the interest on those. So I think we're in the right steps, but I, we can't do any of this in a short amount of time. I'm still in favor of the .68 tax rate. I'm still in favor of the stepped approach. I don't want any employee to be left behind or underpaid, but we need a, we need a process to get there. And raising the taxes to make that happen like overnight, I think it puts us in a position next year and it puts us in a position for the year after that that is not gonna be in a favorable position. If we wanna do this, then I think there might need to be something else that gets sacrificed in this budget. I don't know exactly what that is. I could make some recommendations, but at my company, when they cut, they cut 11% across the board. Sorry, goodbye, you're gone. Early retirement, whatever. They made cuts. Why? Because they have to, they have to enter to the stockholders. It's not crazy. It's not anything that I like, and I don't wanna do that to certain employees. But we didn't get here overnight, and I think we need a stepped approach to this, and raising the taxes to do this is not what I wanna do.
Let's go back and figure out, uh.
I'll try, Mayor. Well, I thank staff for putting together the attachment, that memo outlines a bunch of different options. I guess what I'd be leaning, leaning towards is the 1C. I guess a combination of the 1C and the two proposed cuts in 1C, the tax rate at .68, as Councilmember Moore, I believe he was leaning towards that. And then getting to the 100% of comp in September. I think that's a good balance. I would like to use the cuts in 1C to help boost the general fund balance. I don't necessarily think we need to go out and spend that right now, I think with the hurricane and the, how the reimbursements are gonna come in, I'd rather see us carry a little bit higher over policy balance, even if we can get to over policy balance. But anyway, that's where I was leaning, kind of a combo of 1C and two. The other items, the motor pool fund, whether that makes sense to bring it in this year or push it to next, I'm fine with this one, pushing it to next year. And in terms of the acceleration of the West Side Library, I've never been in favor of issuing the COs, initiating COs, and specifically now when we cut a bond, bond referendum on the horizon, I think it makes perfect sense to keep, to keep it on, on the schedule, it's in the five-year CIP. And that's all I have for right now, Mayor.
Okay. You know, we're starting thinking about what we need to do, and we keep ducking the dodging and trying to figure out how we can do something good and not do it right. I think, I think a 70% increase, it's a, it was a tax rate, but I'm sure it's something that we've got to start moving on. We went back a number of years ago, our council had the opportunity to take advantage of some of the national boom in our economy, and things just went just wild, and what we did, we did a tax cut. Then that was the time we probably should have taken the, taken the mature, direct action and raised the tax rate so we could start putting in the process some of the things. One of us, the parks department area, some of the parks, and finally got around to doing something we did in 1978, tax, uh, public tax bill, and with the citizens and asked them, and they said, yeah, we'd like to do that, and we needed other money to do it, because then the recession hits later, some five years later, we couldn't really have that thing built. Well, we've not done fiscal responsible things as a council, and I think it's time to start being more fiscally responsible, what we have to do as a citizen city, and what needs to be done, and we're gonna continue to be, apparently, we all recognize there. These cities that we're very proud of, I think we need to start taking care of. So I'm basing it on to, I couldn't make a focus, sorry about that.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a couple of questions. With respect to option four versus five, I see the front of policy, frontality policy is actually better for option four. Is there a reason for that, or are we not putting that much money where it could go?
So you're looking on page?
Twenty-two? Twenty-two? Twenty-two, four, twenty-two, yes, sir.
So I believe, Secretary Carbone, John, that's simply going up to the rollback rate and not necessarily dedicating any of those expenditures towards ending to get our fund balance up?
Well, it's going plus or minus half cent overall back.
I'm sorry. I was looking at, right, three, so. So John?
Sure, so the four is with the tax rate of .69 and doing the 100% still at mid-year. And when we jump up to the .75, we're doing it full year, so the amount of the common class, more or less, it goes up for that.
Now, well, five shows 100% at mid-year as well. My five shows 100%. I'm looking at the wrong.
She didn't like the title, but yeah, that's the 1.69, one?
My five shows .7.
Yeah.
.7, and it says 100% at mid-year.
That's a typo, it should be full year.
100% at September?
October.
October?
Yeah.
Okay, so four, four though, is .69 and 100% at mid-year.
Mid-year, yes.
And, okay, what would that look like if we write four and 100% at full year? I'm assuming our frontality of policy would go up?
Go down.
Oh, go down, I'm sorry.
Go down. Probably below, probably below.
Below policies, okay. Um, I voted to go up to 70 or half 70 to our threshold. Obviously, that's above rollback. I'm fine with option three, I'm actually, I'm fine with option two and I'm fine with option four. Option three, I'm kinda wondering what that would look like with 100% at full year? Would we have to do these reductions if we had option three, the 100% at full year? Well, so the memo that we received was, I guess we didn't receive a menu from, or a memo from Chief Spires, nor from Public Works, so I was kinda wondering how they feel about these reductions. Chief still here?
Here.
I mean, you know, I see on some of the reductions, we're cutting vehicles or we're cutting officers. Obviously, you know, it was, it's been an officer that's been making most of the comments, you know, and so I kinda wanna see how that, how the P feels about that.
Which part, which part is bigger?
Well, for option three, it would be to delay officers.
I'll work with that. This is where we're concerned at this point.
And what about, there's option 1C, Councilmember Carbone mentioned, is delay officers and money to the fleet?
The fleet, I actually, we're okay with both of them. The fleet, we just got a lot of cars last month, or we just got, approved a lot of our cars last month, we'll be okay in that area. The officers is not gonna affect our day-to-day operations.
Two officers, that makes it effective.
Not at this point. I'm more concerned with, this year, Berkshire was all about raising our civilian stamp, so I like the option of each of our two dispatchers and our G.O.S.
Well, okay, thanks. Appreciate it. Well, okay, thanks, appreciate it.
Here. It's replacement vehicles for us, and the department's okay with that.
Is Chris here?
Take your folks to Eric.
So, I'm, again, I'm comfortable with option three, I'm comfortable with. Now, I'm comfortable with option two, four, and three. Two, three, and four. And five, if that's the right. I don't think, I don't think council is going to go to five.
Okay, so get all that. Okay, my comment before I go about the tax rate, it starts within 25 days, and then I actually, I'm doing one. Sex, motor pool fund, yes, I've got it, so wise and a topic idea, and some of the employees and, and moving up the construction on the West Side Library, if we have decided where the, that is the ideal location for it, I probably will say. The reason why the West Side Library is a place out there is that nobody wants to come over here to the city hall and say it's too far to drive. If we are not careful, we'll put in a lot of West Side Library position where everybody says, well, it's too far to drive. So, it needs to be at the right location, and I think we, I'm sure we're going to get a consultant to come in and determine where that location is based on the foundation that we have today and what the population goals will be, and the fact that it is a county library and will be used by anybody in the county that would come into the library, so it has to be, probably, we may need two libraries out west, depending on where it is there pretty well and one of us off the south, so. I think we have to be a little careful, and I think we need to move it up and get it working because it's, we're a growing city and libraries aren't becoming available, or we use it in the present time, so. It's the second largest user of libraries, books in the county at the present time, and I don't want to over-say y'all.
I'm going to start a budget discussion with something I have never said, I don't think, since Councilmember Carbone's been on. I actually agree with him on one. The library, I do, if we're going to have a bond election coming up, I think that's something that is obvious just to be on a bond and not a CO. So, we made a verge at that point. You know, when I look at the budget, we're talking line items and, and I'm okay with some of the line item cuts, I'm okay with some of that. What I haven't been okay with year after year is we keep talking about fund balance, and we've got to keep it above policy. I look at other government agencies in the area, and I can guarantee you, they haven't talked about their reserve fund or fund balance going under policy in probably decades. They have kept tax rates that were fairly stable instead of the cuts that we've done, and they've stored that money away for a rainy day. When we look at our state, that they have a rainy day, yet we're cutting to the point where we're worried if we're within the policy for a rainy day. Not, not do we have enough money if something like what we just went through happened and FEMA can't pay, or it's going to take a while to get paid back. Our savings account's dry, and that's the best way I can describe what I see and what I feel. And yes, 70 cents is higher than the current tax rate. It's lower than the tax rate from previous year. So, we're somewhere in between there, and it's definitely lower than the tax rate from 15, 20 years ago. So, you know, we got backwards with our debt service and our operations, and it's time to start moving that in the right direction, and the only option I've seen that does that is a 60 cent tax rate, I mean, a 70 cent tax rate. And that's my focus before I get off here. It's not what we're doing year to year. It's how are we positioning ourselves for five, 10, 15 years down the road, and we've got to get operations at a higher percentage of our taxes. We've got to get some money in the banks when we need it, we can draw on. And, and that's honestly the reason I proposed the 70 cent maximum tax rate, wanted to have this discussion. The salaries, I hope we can get there, I really do. But honestly, my reasoning is, where are we going to be in five years, 10 years, 15 years? I plan on being around for another 40 years, and I don't want to continue to deal with these problems, and I'll be honest, I definitely don't want to sit up here and deal with these problems. But we need to start moving in the right direction, that's why I did the 70 cent, and I really hope people think on that and contemplate over, not what we're doing for the upcoming year, what are we doing to this city for the, I mean, generations?
Well, I hope I'm not sitting up here in 40 years. I like Councilman Orno voted for this 70 cent tax rate. I want to make sure I understand these four scenarios, Clay. Number one, how about getting to 100% of compensation level by mid-year, is that mid-2018?
Yes, sir.
And, okay, so scenario one has a 550 dollar cut. Number two was the 17-year tax rate gets us there by September 2018 with no cuts, is that correct?
September, that was September, two.
So, is it number two?
Number two.
That's setting up to do 100% in September, so right at the end of this one year.
September 19.
That's one.
Eighteen, sorry.
That's one, oh, I thought of the three-year step-up in the tax rate. So, that's September 2014?
No, no, no. Number two is mid-year, so that's like, April 18, and then going 100% in September of 18, so at the end of our mixed fiscal year.
All within this next year?
All within mixed fiscal year.
All within next year, but, okay. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm appreciative of the conversations that we're having about the, about going up to the 0.7 rate. I disagree with Councilmember Orno, I think that every, every city needs to have a conversation about them going above and below fund balance, but I don't think it's our job to hold a bunch of citizens' money just in case. We, we just had a big just in case, and we don't know what the impact is going to be to our fund balance, if we had double or triple that, and we only needed a small portion of it, and we're still holding on to that money when it can be better used. You know, I don't, I just don't think that's, the purpose of government is to hold on to citizens' money for a just in case. I think that we need to, we need to take the minimum, we need to take exactly what we need to do, our, to pay for our expenditures and be able to meet our necessities and be able to meet the obligations in order for us to keep the bond rating we have, to meet the necessities that the state requires upon us, but nothing more. You know, I think that's a conversation we have to have every, every year. With respect to 100% compensation, you know, I agree with Councilman Oren, I think 1C is a good, is a good compromise. I could, I could also be comfortable with, with option two, where we go up slightly over what I was, what we originally talked about was the 68 cents, and you go to 68 12, we're still below rollback, we can, we can cover the 100% in September. I really lean more toward the 1C because it gets them, it gets our staff to the 100% in mid-year. What I would like to do is, you know, if we can get to them in mid-year and the next year's budget conversation, though we're early, start looking at what we want to do above, above the 100%, get to 105, 110, and really make sure that our, we're being proactive of making sure that our, our staff wants to be here long-term. So, you know, I would really lean towards 1C, but I wouldn't lean towards anything that would get us, get us to 100% mid-year. I think the 95 initially would be fine if we had additional steps, but if we're all comfortable going to the 100%, the 100% at mid-year, I think that's where I would, the direction I would like to go. With respect to the library, look, I understand, I don't really like debt spending, but what we're talking about in CIP is, we're not even looking at beginning to design the thing, even getting a PR before 2020. The, the, we just expanded our East Side Library for 100, 10,000 square feet to 20,000 square feet because it was overcrowded and there were not a whole lot, not a whole lot of room to do a whole lot of things for the library to operate as we want to, and that's the second most-used library, second to the one on the west. That's 100,000, or 10,000 square feet that we expanded from six to four in a shopping center. We don't have parking, if, there's a lot of people who are using it, and I'm sorry, the need out there is accelerating what we initially planned. I mean, that's our job, is to be reactive to it. There is no community space in that area. There is no one book on the West Side, nowhere for them to go that is good quality community space, and a library is perfect for that. And I think that particularly with respect to the 07 bond and the mistakes that we made associated with getting that funded and how long that that, we promised them a sports facility and how long they had to wait, frankly, we owe it to them to accelerate this. And if we got to dip a little bit into the, into debt to be able to get it moved ahead, I'd rather move forward with it now. The construction, the construction process for this wouldn't even finish until 2023. You know, I'd like to see that move forward because there really is no other option for them, and we have nothing else on the, on the CIP, nor does the county, nor does the state, nor does anybody, and any private industry that I'm aware of, I've talked to the YMCA, but that's an uphill battle. We have nothing over there that is good quality community space for the people who live out there. Stay-at-home moms that want to get out in a comfortable place without have them having to pay a substantial fee. I think we owe it to them to move the library up. My question would be, we haven't identified in the, in the CIP, the, the location on Chatham Creek Parkway, do we, do we own or have any possession of that, or is that in developer control?
We own at these properties.
So, we own the property, all we have to do is start, start with the design. At very least, we can get the design moving and understand what the cost of locations are. And we've talked for the last couple of years about if we delay, the cost goes up. Well, I guess it's true with this, if we delay, the cost is going to go up. If we wait till 2022, it's going to be 10, 15, 20% more expensive, and the need is now. If you go to that library on a regular basis, which I'm sure Councilman Oren has been there a lot, it's a crowded library, and I think, I think, again, not to belabor the point, but we owe it to those people to have that library, start now, sooner rather than later. That's all I have to say.
Your thoughts, boys?
Yes, sir.
I think we owe it all to our residents here in Sherland, but I do want to make one statement. I'm looking for the 2007, and the reason some of them are late, Mayor and I were the only two here, but if people remember back during that time, we put everything out of the bond issue, what we're going to do on each one, let's people go there. But little did we know that in 2008, we were going to have the highest unemployment rate we've ever had. We didn't know that we had 650 homes on the West Side that was in foreclosure. So, you know, those are things that happen. Do you end up raising the tax rate in order to build those facilities and do all of it during a period of time when people are without a job, when people are facing foreclosure on their homes and unemployment is highest as ever again? No, because it was very difficult for us to be able to go and do that, recognize that, spend that money, and go in debt. So, that was a reason that we prolonged a lot of those of going in, and maybe it did go after long. I came off in 13, so, you know, you had two years to do that, to put it back on. But that's part of the reason that we did that, and we never promised the people that we'd do it within a, 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 amount of time. It was made up, but having to raise the tax during the timeframe that we were in and all the things that was impounding, you know, the city of Portland during that time, so that's the last I'll talk about, the 2007 bond issue. But I think, you know, on this, if we've looked at it from all sides so far, you know, I want to be able to keep the color at 2%, I want to be able to keep the spell program in there as what we are. We may have to wait until, you know, a period of time on the, on the compensation, through a period of time, have it completed in mid-year of 2015, in order to do that. And so, one of the reasons for that being, if we can do it, and then go ahead and give dollar raises, go ahead and give spell programs, that way we can only do, and those are things that I think would be a quick beneficial thing to do, and then come in with a compensation, you know, in the first quarter, then if we're going to be able to do that and finish it up in midterm of 18, I think that would be the right thing for us to do. And one of the reasons for that, we don't know where we stand officially right now, with the thing that Harvey hit us with, we have no understanding of that, of what it's going to impact us with, for people that moved out, all they had was a black plastic bag taken off, they were calling us out, they don't know where they're coming back and when they're coming back, and what they're coming back to, and I think the tax that's we're going to see on the, on the property tax is going to be slow in coming in, and I think we're going to see some kind of relief given to people during that time, to be able to do that. So, that's pretty well my concern that I have right now. I don't know, on the West Side, on the library as, as it is, it is a very heavily-used library. I don't know what the plan is right now, or the design, or the construction that actually started, and the funding to be put in place for the construction.
So, the existing CIP, what is it called, I mean, it's a 18, but, I'm sorry. I can't remember.
Right. Just tapping out, right, bro.
The, uh.
Let's complete your report. So, right now, it's scheduled for design in fiscal year 2020 and '21, and it starts in 2022 and '23. That is shown as unfunded or funded with the passage of the 2019, potential 2019 bond package. So, one of the things that we looked at is that that's just a general schedule that's been put together for proposed 2019 bond package projects. That's not a fully vetted list of projects, there's still projects to come, that will come out of our master drainage plan, and potentially some other planning documents reporting on right now that haven't even been considered against the, the projects that have been considered in the past. So, I think as we get closer to that 2019 bond package, if that's one of the projects that's included in there, we'll have to look at it at that time as far as where it's scheduled in that 2019 bond package. If it's a priority, given the ability to be very, you know, to the front end of that bond package, right now, I'd say, I'd say start a year or so into that bond package is where it's currently scheduled. But again, that's a schedule that's just been put out there based on the current projects that have been proposed and trying to smooth out the amount of approximately $7 million bond package that we do over five years. So, all those things are subject to review and approval of future CIPs and the bond packages. What is our current lease agreement? Are we in agreement?
So, our current lease agreement is a little bit complicated. There's an original lease on the first 6,000 square feet, which expires on April 30 of 2020, but it has two renewal options that extend that lease to, the first renewal will extend it to April 30 of 2023, and the second renewal will extend it two more years to 2025.
extend to two more years to 2025. The additional four thousand square feet, when we expanded the library, expires on September thirtieth of 2020. So the both, the original leases have both expired in 2020, but they're offset from October to September. And then that one has two renewal periods as well, where it will extend three years and then potentially a division of two years to 2025.
Your lease contract.
So the current schedule's basically, in, in the C I P, is based on completing that first renewal period and immediately moving to the new library. So approximately, um, let me find that amount. Currently, the cost average is approximately twenty-two thousand dollars per month, or two hundred sixty-four thousand dollars annually.
So we go after twenty, whatever it was here, twenty-one, twenty-two? And with the increased amount, do you have any account?
Uh, on the increase of the cost.
Yeah, if I stayed there until twenty or twenty-one, whatever.
The cost of the new library building?
No, no, no. It's the cost of overall, just staying in that space there.
Uh, that, that, the average number that I put together takes into account the increases, the lease, the lease rates escalate over time and they're different from the original six thousand square feet and, and the later four thousand square feet. So that twenty-two thousand a month, or two hundred sixty-four thousand dollars annually is kind of averaged over the life of the current period plus the renewal periods. They don't escalate a whole lot, so that's just a general ballpark we can use throughout the rest of the lease.
Okay, so talking thirty plus if we stay there until twenty-one, twenty-two, can leave spring?
Yes, sir. Yeah, if we were staying there another four years, we'd be a little bit over eighty dollars. Um, we also looked at, um, if we were to accelerate, where we wind up in the, uh, where we'd wind up in the lease if we accelerated the project, what the implications of that were. And, um, you know, we would potentially have to break the lease or relet the space, which is allowed with planning or approval. Um, there's also a potential option, but it's at the landlord's discretion to go to a month-to-month lease. So we've got kind of those implications in there as well as if we have to break during, during, in the midst of one of those renewal periods.
Okay, so let me see this one. That, what we're looking at now with the building, F F N A, total of nine point three B.
I believe the overall project cost is, uh, construction, F F N A contingencies, closer to sixteen point seven.
No, eighteen point two five.
Yeah, overall, the entire project design is going in about eighteen point two five.
And we don't have any, how many square feet is that?
I believe it's approximately thirty thousand square feet. Which is close to maybe a little bit larger than the Tom Reed Library once we've completed the expansion at that library that's currently in the way. So comparable size.
And this is us in the county, so the county's not putting anything into this.
Under the agreements with the county and how they operate the library system, we provide the buildings, the furniture, I believe some of the equipment as well, and they provide the personnel, the, uh, the books. The stacks, the circulation and the collection, and then they also provide personnel, I believe a, some of the IT functions.
How much revenue do we get off of the library? Anybody have any idea? Zeroing off. So that's what we do on the piece. Settling up security?
Yes, sir.
Mayor thinks so. Clay, looks like if the C I P moves up the library, it's a possibility of, to the hospital and having a more issue, it might get really worse than that, perhaps, is a possibility. Motor pool makes common sense, I don't think it may be possible, but, uh, motor pool is a nice common sense and a good idea. And I think your tax seventy cents would, something up beyond some salary issues. Can you fill us in on that?
Yep, if I, if I could and totally the council's willing, um, you know, looking at that page four, you know, I heard, was listening carefully, if there's any appetite towards, um, you know, consensus or a vote to ask us to prepare information on the multi-year for one of these options, I think it would help us all because right now, you know, everything, you know, we all wanna do a lot of things, there's a lot of talk, but, you know, one C and, and three to me, both of those are at or under the rollback rate. Both of those deliver a hundred percent of the new pay plan mid-year, so it's a partial step, you know, not in our way. Two scares me frankly. That's to me sort of doing everything and waiting to pay for it all until, you know, the next budget year.
Would it be, would it be helpful if we just went down the line and gave our, our number, one C, two, or three, or whatever, so that you have a consensus?
Yeah, that'd be great, uh, as long as you focus on one C or three, but...
I'm good with one C.
I'm good with one C.
Wait, you're telling us to make a decision only between those two? I was just thinking this. And, and people might choose, you need five votes to go over the rollback, so I didn't hear five people love that, so that's what's gonna work out, too.
I like three, four, and five.
I'll be honest.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna go opposite. I like five, four, three, so I can live with three. I think that's what Derek was trying to say, too.
I like five and three.
One C and three, I'm both, both of those are comfortable.
You gotta pick in between those two.
You chose three.
One of them was in the list, two of them weren't.
You, five wasn't even on the list, that's what I'm saying.
One and three.
One C and three.
One C and three.
All right, fellas. Hey, at least it's better than five and five.
So that might change by next week.
I mean, there's not five votes to go above the rollback, uh...
Oh, yeah. We'll, we'll write off those, what I heard mostly and, uh, we'll, we're gonna, well, I think with that, eleven's the just J P's next week, so by eighteen, we'll have a pretty good settlement.
Clay, can I, one more thing? Can we do the same thing on the library? I heard a difference of opinion there, so if we can do the library, uh, leave as is or move up?
Yeah, leave as is.
Leave as is.
Move up.
Leave as is. Bond election. Leave as is.
Move up.
As is.
And then? And then the motor pool.
I'm fine to land that one next year.
I'm fine with the land.
I'm fine with the land, the staff's over there.
I, I wanna do it, it's like, yeah. Like mine, I'd like to do it.
Let's be brand new, see if you guys will be giving it out.
I'm fine with the land. I think we've had it, huh?
Go with higher.
You're very recorded.
Yeah, I guess on the motor pool, that sounds like a good deal. Why do you want clarification on that? How do you play, you're getting the gas, or?
That's out. That covers all of them.
I'll send that to Reed, so.
Give me what you can.
You're pretty well, quick step on that.
Yes, sir, I appreciate, I mean, uh, you know, we were, we'll get that, yeah.
Okay. Well, let me move to item number three. This means I can adjourn. This is a series of special meeting at eight fifty-two, eight fifty.